Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 19th, 2013. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Jason DeLorenzo. Councilmember Jason DeLorenzo is excused.
Thank you. First item of agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 5th City Council meeting and the March 12th City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, a proclamation recognizing the month of March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Mr. Ferguson and receiving Jenny Hack.
This is my second proclamation, so I think I can handle this one this time.
Practice makes perfect.
This is an example of government working efficiently, in my experience, which is three and a half months now, I think. But this young woman came by way of email to me and asked if we could consider this idea, and within 15 or 20 days or something, it was in writing here, so that's to be expressed here. Proclamation, whereas multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer worldwide, is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur at multiple sites, and whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 100,000 people in the United States alone, with an estimated 20,000 cases diagnosed each year, and 10,000 losing their battle each year. Whereas once a disease of the elderly, is now being found in increasing numbers in people under 65. And whereas, because myeloma is a rare disease that can be delayed diagnosis, leading to delayed treatment. For this reason, an increased awareness of myeloma for clinicians and the general public will lead to earlier diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. And whereas continued investment and innovation is critical to achieve early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for the myeloma patients. And whereas although we have seen important advances in the last decade, there is still no cure for myeloma. And whereas the city of Palm Coast is committed to increasing awareness of myeloma and encouraging private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of March 2013 be officially designated as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast. Sign this 19th day of March 2013, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor John Nets. Young woman would like to say something?
Please. You may need to pull that microphone down just a little bit.
I want to thank Mayor Nets and also Councilman Ferguson, and I also want to thank Cindy and all the other councilmen for declaring March the Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. M&amp;M, as I call it, is an incurable blood cancer that develops in the bone marrow. Multiple myeloma is the one major cancers that have been diagnosed amongst the first responders of 9/11. It is up over 180% over the other types of cancers. I want to express my gratitude again for this recognition. As I read the list of cities that have declared their proclamation, I am so proud to see that Palm Coast, Florida included. Thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing April as Water Conservation Month.
Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is working together with the state of Florida, other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas April is typically a dry month in Florida when water demands are increased, and whereas the St. John's River Water Management District encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by conserving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. Adopted March 19th, 2013, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a few words?
You didn't get the memo.
Hold it. Photo op. Agenda item number four, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Alcoholics Beverage, the City of Palm Coast Code of Ordinances to eliminate a conflict with other sections. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, author amending Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Palm Coast. It's providing for conflict severability and for codification and effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, this is the second reading of this ordinance. It's truly a housekeeping item. Our original code had a section that only addressed a couple of our original parks regarding alcohol consumption. In 2007, we updated the code but did not delete the other section. So this is, in essence, cleaning up the code as per our city attorney's request so that it is, there are no conflicts in it. It doesn't change how we operate today. Alcohol consumption is not allowed in our public parks unless you get a permit for an event, which we do issue those permits for events such as wedding receptions, family reunions. But if you do not get a permit for that, for your event, alcohol consumption is not allowed today, and this does not change any of that. It just cleans up the code.
Thank you. Council questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, and in from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Four. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, an ordinance relating to the designation of Central Park and Town Center as the city's civic center. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance again of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, author amending Chapter 42, Sections 161 and 162 of that Code of Ordinances. The city of Palm Coast provides for conflict, severability, codification, and provides for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is the first reading of this ordinance. It's really unrelated to the last one, although it does have to do with alcohol also. We have continued to expand our festivals. They've been very successful, and staff has been trying very hard to keep them fresh and also updated. And what came to our attention is that our way of contracting with a retail vendor for the alcohol services at our events was really not up to standards, not what the state asked for. So we've done a lot of research to figure out if there was a better way, and a way we could use local vendors instead of going out of town. And we found that, yes, there definitely was a different way, a way that the state recommends to us. So Lisa, who's taken the lead on this project, is going to go through the details. She's got a presentation to show exactly what we're trying to accomplish here and continue to keep our festivals moving forward. Lisa, please take it from here.
I'm trying to get it up on the screen.
There's a magic button. Everybody at first sits in that chair, always has to...
Nobody told me about the magic button.
Yes. There's a button.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Ms. Landon, thank you for the introduction. I'm going to do a brief PowerPoint presentation for you.
Either get closer to the microphone, or turn it on, or...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's better. Better work.
All right. I'm going to take you through a brief PowerPoint presentation. Central Park, our civic center. This is basically a definition of what we're calling a civic center through our city ordinance 2013. It shall be a public location where members of the community can gather for group activities, social support, public information, as well as other purposes. And the next three slides are going to be pictures of some of our events. This is Rock and Rib Fest, Palm Coast International Festival, we started last year, and then our seafood festival. And basically, our rationale is our intent to improve our event delivery, use local vendors, and comply with what the state recommends as their best practice. The next couple of slides, I'm going to show you a list of other cities within just the northeast and central Florida areas where they actually have this license. So Jacksonville Metropolitan Park has a civic center designation. City of Largo, this is their central park. Miramar Civic Center, as well as their aquatic center. And this is the Lakeland Sports Complex. So basically, the state license process, and this is as outlined by what the state requires and recommends, is that the first step is the city needs to designate an area as a civic center. And then we can apply for an annual consumption license, which costs $250. And then, like anybody else, we need to apply per event for a permit, an alcohol permit. So basically, $250 for the annual, and then we have the three events where we actually currently serve alcohol, so it costs $325. And that's opposed to $1,550 for a regular retail license. This slide here shows you basic economics. The past couple of events, these are the gross bar sales, so Rock and Rib earned $16,700 for their bar gross sales. And then you can see the others. And then we're estimating, if we go forward with the license for this event, our expenses at $6,200. So basically, we're going to be able to reinvest the revenues back into our event and for the residents, decrease their admission price. Last year, we charged $20 to get into Rock and Rib. It'll be a lot less expensive this year. So the benefits, typically, there won't be any impact on our local nonprofits. Our liability won't change, and we already have alcohol consumption at the three events that were outlined. We'll be able to keep our dollars local. We're staying consistent with what the state requires. We're maintaining Central Park as our community gathering place for many of our events. And once again, we're reinvesting the money back into our events. Basically, events such as these, we like to showcase Palm Coast to our visitors. They provide fun and entertainment to our residents, and they're staying in line with prosperity 2021, with our quality of life aspect. And our goal is to make our events better, not necessarily bigger. Any questions?
Council questions? Mr. McGuire.
Can you talk to the issue of liability? Because the citizens that I've talked to in my district are, think it's a great idea, but they're concerned about the city's liability for people that might overindulge.
Mr. McGuire, currently, we are required to have liability insurance for every event that we host. So we're already covering the city, so I don't see that we'll have any changes because we're, it's something that we're already doing as best practice.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mr..
It's not the liability bill that I think is the problem. If any of your residents are concerned about the alcohol side of it, it's the people's side of it who consumes the alcohol and create the problem. Alcohol is, I think, is anything that contains, I guess, what, a percentage of...
Five percent.
Five, something like that. Okay. But some people, when they come to events, they tend to over-enjoy themselves. I did a survey of residents between meetings, just to get a feel for how the residents feel about bringing hard liquor into the event. And it was interesting because where I did my survey, people were consuming alcohol. But when I raised the question about, do you want the hard liquor in your parks? I was surprised at some of the comments. I went to a breakfast event, and I put that question to them, and there were some who were for, but the majority were against it because they felt that the events that we give are very good, they are enjoyed by most people and their families, and they felt that, why is it that we have to bring hard liquor into the event? If those people are not already there, then the only reason they're coming is for the hard liquor. Then I went to the St. Patrick's Day Dinner, and I was surprised at the comments I got there, because they were consuming a lot of liquor. And the majority I spoke to said, well, it's our park, and we should enjoy it, but we should enjoy it because of what's there and the event. And they didn't think the hard liquor was going to improve it any more than what it already is. If they're coming for the hard liquor, then they're not coming for the event. So I went to an awards recognition dinner, and it was the same thing. There were some for it, and the majority were not because they didn't felt that the hard liquor was necessary. You come there to enjoy yourself. Well, I know their comments are not going to change what we're about to do, so, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's not necessary to have the hard liquor to have a successful event. I think our events are successful, but I'm not sure we're moving in the right direction in terms of turning our park into a bar. However, it appears that we're not going to be building a city hall there, so we might as well use it as a bar. I guess you would get from me that I'm, I would not be going for this particular ordinance. But I want you to know that there are people out there who feel very, they're very serious about their city and the appearance of their city. And sure, we bring other people in, but they don't want to bring the wrong people in. So with that, I'll sign off.
Captain Carmen, we've had, Lisa, how many Rock and Rib events?
We're working on our fourth year.
We're on our fourth. How many seafood festivals?
We're working on our fourth year.
Fourth year. And we've had one international food and wine event. Captain, have we had problems with excess consumption of alcohol?
As of yet, no, very minor, minor, nothing, no major problems at any of our events that Lisa's put together. Thank you. I, for one, take exception to the characterization that we're converting our parks into bars. These are special events that you have maybe two or three a year. I think three was the example that Lisa used. And I'll be quite frank with you, I went to the International Food and Wine Festival and was a little distressed to find that there was no wine. That's because we, this is one of those things where the local vendors could not be there, could not participate, so therefore, that aspect was missing. Could you touch a little bit about on how this changes access for local vendors?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, next to me is Mark Woods from Palm Coast Bartending. He is a local business owner. He has a business in Flagler Beach. And if we can go forward with this, I would like to hire him to handle our event, Rock and Rib. Do you want to speak a little bit about?
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, Councilman, Mayor Nets, for having me here. When Lisa contacted me a little bit ago, when this was in formulation, I was very excited to begin a partnership with the city of Palm Coast. As most of you know, I'm a longtime resident of Flagler County, over 15 years, business owner in Flagler Beach. My company adds to events in this way, be it a wedding reception, a business grand opening, a spa party, something like this. We provide for those who choose to indulge, a safe and controlled environment if you so. And I look forward to helping the city accomplish its goals in the town center. Also, the staff that will be coming, majority will be what's called TIPS certified. TIPS is a responsible vendor training. I'm a trainer for this, certified to do so. TIPS training encourages and helps those who serve alcohol, be they working in a bar, working in a restaurant, or selling it in the publics from the beer section, to recognize and identify problems with underage drinking, overconsumption, and how to avoid those problems.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, I, a couple of points to contribute here to this discussion. Number one, we already are selling alcohol at these events, correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
So there's no change in the city's posture as to, including hard liquor? We're already selling hard liquor there, so that is not a change. But I think with Councilman Lewis's point is image, and the city, quote, adopting this image of being a seller of hard liquor is somehow inconsistent with some people's values. I share the concern that people getting over-served or being irresponsible. But I think in my experience of going to community events, it's people are coming in lit up already. It's not because there's already alcohol there. They're lit up in the parking lot, they're lit up at home, and they come in with a little bit of being over the edge. And I don't think the fact that we're considering selling alcohol under this permit alcohol license...
Responsible behavior is not because you're, the city's selling alcohol. Those would be my comment.
If I could, Mayor. If I could, Mayor. Addressing the issue of hard liquor. Hard liquor, in this case, we'll call it, we'll say whiskey, has this kind of poor image as something that somehow intoxicates you faster than beer or wine. And the fact of the matter is, is that a 12-ounce serving of beer, 5-ounce serving of wine, or 1 and 1/2 ounce serving of whiskey, we'll say, contain the same amount of alcohol. None intoxicates anybody faster than other. So someone drinking white wine over in the corner can get intoxicated just as quickly as someone drinking a rum and coke. So the concern about somehow if we start serving hard liquor, that everyone's going to, all of a sudden, it's going to be like a frat party at Town Center, is really unfounded because overindulgence is overindulgence. It doesn't matter which form it comes in.
Thank you. Other council questions? If not, we'll open the meeting to the public, and in from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. Agenda item number five.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. There were some figures up there, 16,78176 dollars. How much of that is expense, and how much of that is profit? Now, let me ask you another question. What part of that area does the city own outright? Are you saying civic center? Do we own that? Do we own that piece of property? Or is that the piece of property that was set aside for the, for the city hall? There's got to be a certain amount that we own, or we don't own, or we're leasing.
We'll get an answer to those questions. Next speaker? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. Well, first, Mr. Landon, the area that we use for these events, what portion of it does the city own?
The city owns, actually, there's two sites, if you will. One of them is Central Park, and the city owns that outright. And the outline of that is, obviously, the lake is the center, and then you see where there's the nice sod, the zoysia grass, and then it goes into the, kind of the pasture area, if you will. Well, the nice sod is ours, and then when you get into the area that's not sodded, is privately owned. Except for the second site, which is on the north end of the lake, which is the city hall site, and the city owns that also. So many of our events take place on the private property in addition to Central Park, and we always have an agreement with the property owner there to allow our events to take place on that property also at this time. Because they understand the benefit of attracting people to that area. They're very cooperative and like the idea that the events are taking place in it, so...
And Lisa, the statistics. 16,700.
Lisa, you have...
Explain to me, well, I think what we need to do is put into perspective, how was alcoholic beverage, beer, wine, and liquor served at a Rock and Rib Fest? How was it, who did it?
We hired a vendor from out of the area. They handled the alcohol aspect of the event, and their gross sales for Rock and Rib was 16,700.
So they collected...
Unfortunately, I don't know what their expenses were, but I estimated what our expenses would be for this 2013 year at $6,200.
Yeah, I suspect that if I walked into a local bar and asked them what their profit margin was on a drink, I don't think they'd tell me either, but...
Very high.
Don't put yourself in trouble now.
Is reducing the cost, and I guess that's, at least contributes to reducing the admission cost, but to me, and I think it's important, if city council wants to have a discussion about the philosophy of alcoholic beverage at a city event, that's a separate discussion.
As you pointed out, there is no change in the nature of the event. The Rock and Rib Fest will look like it always looked. The change is who will be the purveyor. And can we do local route, so?
That's correct.
If we want to have a discussion about the advisability of having alcoholic beverage in a city park, that's a separate discussion. We certainly entertain that.
Mayor, you're right on target. That's, to ask, to answer Jack's questions further, what is profit? Well, what we're showing there is about $10,000 would be profit. Currently, that profit went to a private vendor that was outside the county. What we are proposing here is to use a local, small business. That's why we say it's consistent with our prosperity 2021. And then reinvest that profit into the event, reducing the price of the event to our participants from $20 to $3. Not just because of this, but we're changing the format somewhat because we heard the concern that $20 was too much. So we're trying to listen to the customer, if you will. The participant in all these events will see no change at all. This is all a matter of how... This is all a matter of how the, or who is actually in charge of the operation, but the participant won't see anything different. We're not going to offer something different, we're not going to take something away, it's gonna be all the same, just as the mayor pointed out.
Your Honor, if I may, as a follow-up question, if we succeed in doing this, roughly how much of a factor is it in reducing the admission from 20 to 3? Just off the top of your head. If you, if this happens, we're gonna take it from $20 a person to $3 a person. How much of that $17 reduction is because we are changing the way that we sell hard liquor and designating a civic center?
There's a lot of variables that go into our overall expenses.
I'm sure.
Our overall costs. I don't really know exactly how to answer your question. We have some different expenses than we had last year, but $10,000 to help our bottom line will make a big difference.
Okay. Mr. Lewis.
What we must do, if we're going to proceed on this, is to make sure that our reporting of profit and our reporting of costs is, are true, a reflection of the activities that we perform. Seen any latest reports on cost analysis? If we talk about numbers, that 16,000, I think we, council should also receive a cost analysis of what happened on that particular event. Rather than to give us net, I think we should really look at net-net, and so we can really see exactly what our costs in doing this. The reason I say this is because, not only are we looking at expenses of putting on the event, which includes utilizing city employees, we also have to use services of the sheriff, and, I don't know about. I think to get a true nature, we should, not just do net, we should do net-net and the cost analysis.
Mr. Landon?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, all our events now, the event coordinator, with the help of finance, keeps track of revenue and expenses, and we have those records. And it's, yes, Mr. Lewis, you're 100% right, there's a lot of expenses that go into it. From a staff standpoint, we, all over time, that's as a result of the event, goes, is charged to that event, not to the general fund. The other thing is, is if you recall, we don't use general fund, we don't use tax dollars to support any of our events, because some of them we don't charge and don't receive any revenue from, such as Arbor Day, our Christmas festival and parade. But what we do use is our recycle fund, the revenue we receive whenever time you put out your blue bin, and with the idea of returning that back to the community. That fund actually, though, because of things like Rockin' Rib Fest and Seafood Festival, that we have been making money on those festivals, that fund is very healthy right now. So, but we definitely have those budgets for each event now, and then the actual expenditures that include all the expenditures and the revenue. And we can get that to council at any time.
Yeah, I think that should be a normal process.
Yeah, absolutely, we do too.
Additional council comments? Or is there a motion on agenda item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second. A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, require?
Yes.
Want to remember Lewis?
True to my survey after a vote, no.
Mayor Nance?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion has its free reserve.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, resolution approving submission of Florida Inland Navigation District Waterways Assistant Program Application for Construction of Long Creek Nature Preserve, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, a little bit of history and background. The, what we call Long's Landing, which is kind of the headwater of Long Creek, it's right off Palm Harbor, close to the, across the canal from the Yacht Club. We received a grant from the state a few years ago to purchase a property with the idea that it would be developed into a nature park, and we have proceeded with the design with a grant from FIND that.
Thank you. Nah, you got to.
That grant.
You tried.
We have, are completing design, very close to having design completed. It is now time to apply for additional construction grant dollars from FIND. That application is due April 1st. One of the requirements is that there be a resolution indicating that City Council supports that grant application. If you recall, last year, because it's, these grants from FIND are countywide, that we've actually been working with Flagler County on alternating years. This year, they applied and received a grant for improvements to Bing's Landing, and so next year, or I guess that was last year, and this year, it's kind of our turn to apply for the grant, and Long's Creek is the program that we are proposing. This resolution just supports that plan so that we can move forward with the grant application.
Council questions?
Your Honor, the grant application is to apply for a federal subsidy in terms of 50% of the estimated cost of $3,930,000 to develop this nature preserve. Where does the $1,965,000 that the city would have to raise going to come from?
Will come out of our capital, general government capital funds.
And just correction, it's not a federal grant, it's a Florida Inland Navigation District, Special District of State of Florida.
My mistake. That was my question.
Yeah. Yeah, by way of clarification, the Florida Inland Navigation District is a special taxing district, includes 12 counties from Duval County to. Their primary focus is to, quote, be the local partner for the maintenance of the intracoastal waterway. That includes dredging and maintenance of dredge material management areas along the shore. Their second charge from the state of Florida is, quote, to promote public access to public waters. They do this through a series of grants to each county that contributes. The grants are for improving public access to public waters. Things like docks, fishing piers, boat ramps, so on and so on and so forth. In fact, Waterfront Park was a major project funded, at least by, in part, by FIND. Same kind of phenomenon.
Your Honor, if the city's half, which is, my worry here is, comes out of a capital fund, where did the, where does the money come from that go into the capital? Is this tax, fire, is this tax money?
Yes, yes. And, you know, with either property tax or sales tax are probably the two primary dollars. Mr. Wire, the key to this, though, is the grant, which two to, over $2 million we receive from the state, has a contingency on a contractual arrangement with the state, that if they were to help purchase the property, that we had to actually use the property for the intended purpose, which was developing this park. If we do not, then the state's gonna request that there too. So, you know, this is not one of those that, it's almost like you can pay $2 million back and receive nothing, or $2 million and have a nice, nice park, nice amenity.
Mr. Landon, my concern is the timeframe. How, how long do we have to act upon this project? Because, speaking for many of the residents where we've just raised their utility rates, I'm not sure, I haven't found a lot of excitement for developing this using tax funds. So what, if we did it five years from now, could we do that?
Actually, I think the deadline by the state, Carl, can you maybe help me out with the timeframe? But the deadline by the state, if we haven't asked for an extension, we're gonna be very close to it. And then the FIND dollars, definitely have a timeline on them too. Carl, help me out with the details.
Yeah, I believe the grant that was used for the purchase of the property, we do an annual report to the state, and the original application with the report had some timeline stipulated, which was, I believe, five years up from the initial purchase, which I basically, I think put this into this year. It does allow you to modify that project plan, the management plan, and request a change to it. Apparently, right now, we are in that final year, I believe. I will have to double check on that to be certain.
And then, Carl, this grant, doesn't FIND put timeframes on their grants also?
Yeah, the current grant, the design money we received from FIND that we completed last year, they funded improvements for the design of the parking entrance driveway, the boat launch, College Waterway, and then the access path and kayak launch in Long's Creek. If we are not under construction contract by October 1st of this year, they will not reimburse us or provide the grant funds for the design to the city. So we lose out on the design phase, so there's that.
What if the project overruns $3,930,000? Who pays the difference?
That amount is a very high amount that I used. That includes a contingency above and beyond the estimated cost of construction. Currently, we have broken the project into two phases. Phase one covers just the site improvements that were paid for with the design grant items, those three items I indicated. That is about 1 and 1/4 million dollars for construction of those elements initially. It's phase one. Our grant application, we were gonna seek multi-year funding so we can get additional funds, which would then cover part of the education center expenses on the. That we're seeking in the second year would be for the education element.
Council questions? Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public, aim for the public wish to be heard.
Jack Carroll, just one question. What's education money? He just said, what is that for? And, well, one more question. How much of that Long Creek Nature Preserve is actually not swampland?
Get you an answer to the question. There is another speaker.
Council members? Dennis McDonald, Palm Coast. When I saw this on the agenda, I was pretty amazed. What we're talking about here doing is, we're talking about asking the taxpayers to spend $2 million after you just raised our utility fees 22%. So, and I don't believe that this project will come in on this kind of money because they pretty much never do. But more importantly, what we have here is a sign of bad management from the city's procedure standpoint. You got us into this tailspin where we now have to spend $2 million because we spent, I don't know, I can't even remember the amount, I'd like to forget it, that we paid for Long's Landing because it was a crazy amount of money. It actually proved to me that you could still make lots of money in Florida selling swampland. You know, and now we're gonna go, we're gonna put more, put millions of dollars more into this thing? This is just a continuous bad cycle, bad management from the city, and it needs to stop here now. And I thought maybe that this was just this one little indication of bad management and poor thinking of our, spending our tax money. But when I watched your workshop, and you indicated that you were going to seek, Mr. Mayor, money for the historical society in Palm Coast, I thought that, you know, that was just capped it all off. It just goes from, from bad to worse. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, Carl, first question was with regard to the education center, which is phase two or somewhere down the line. What is the function of that? What's it all about?
That was tied to the original land purchase grant. We, part of the requirements of that grant was that there would be, I believe it's 12 education sessions or opportunities held at this site annually. And part of the requirement, or part of what we're providing is this education center that will have some exhibits, educational exhibits, as well as some exhibit areas throughout the site. There'll be some areas for the opportunity.
Education for who?
For the public.
About the. Nature center.
Nature center type education.
Correct. The grant didn't tie into specifics of what the education elements were, that they just had to have 12 education opportunities, elements at the project site.
The second question, Long's Landing, Long's Creek, what percentage of is it swamp? Or, I guess a better way of looking at it, what percentage of it is it developable? I was on city council when Raccoon Realty, which had purchased this property from ITT, when they were proposing to do some development. A portion of the property along College Waterway is owned residential, a portion of it is owned retail commercial, and it was the wishes of city council and of the public in general that that property not be developed for that purpose because it had historical and ecological value. That was why the city applied for this grant from the state to purchase the property. But Carl, can you give us some guestimates as to?
Yeah, I just.
What would have happened otherwise?
Yeah, this, the property is just over 15 acres, and I believe the impervious area of development is just over an acre, so I think it said it was about 7% of impervious will be developed basically on the site. Just over an acre of development, and it's roughly 15 acres.
But how much of it is absolutely uplands?
Yeah, I don't have that information accessible to me, but basically, I wanna say more than 50% of the site is uplands. The central part of the site in the area along College Waterway is uplands, as you get towards the creek end on the east side, and on the north end of the property that turns into wetlands. I can get that information to you.
But, but I think the point being is, is that this was one of those purchases, much very similar to Linear Park, where there was actually a proposal to develop this into condos. And we had those development plans in, and the zoning was in place, I believe it was from the county days before we were incorporated. And so, at that time, as the mayor pointed out, because of the nature of the area, the, has the historical wharf, it is the headwater for, or that area between the freshwater and the saltwater, was very environmentally sensitive, it's a great place to get access to that waterway. And the neighborhood didn't want to see condos on the property. That there was, at that time, a very high demand for the city to step in and make sure this didn't get developed into condos, and that we had it as a community amenity. And then ever since then, we've tried very hard to minimize the local tax dollars goes to this, and maximize amount of grant dollars as we promised at that time. And we got both the state grant dollars, which was over $2 million, if I recall, or right around $2 million, and now we're working on the FIND, FIND dollars, grant dollars. So that's kind of the history and background. It's another one of those that I am very proud of, the idea that we're making sure this isn't condos and it. that I am very proud of, the idea that we're making sure this isn't condos and it becomes a nice community amenity. The timing is such that for the dollars is a challenge, and I would agree with that. But in order to obtain the grant dollars, you have to kind of balance the timing issue of local dollars with the opportunity to maximize those grant dollars that are regional in nature.
And you can see here, there's a line on the drawing, this is the edge of the wetlands, basically, that wraps around the property here. So, this is your uplands part, you know, this area. And then the north, you know, this area here is all wetlands.
We're back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Well, I recommend adopting of the resolution, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the submission of a Florida inland navigation district waterway assistance program application.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Question, is there the possibility of dividing the next phase into two phases? In other words, reducing the amount of money that we would request from FINE and reducing the amount of city capital dollars that would, can you split this project into a multi-year project, reducing the impact?
That is a potential possibility. This project, one thing we are looking into is this is a project that we're looking to seek lead silver certification on, which is our, you know, our green certification. We have requested whether we can ask for a phasing to obtain that certification, possibly, potentially with two separate contracts. And if there, if it can be phased, what the limits are in terms of completing the two phases. But furthermore, it can be done. We could just seek the design one elements, the one point, you know, one and a quarter million dollars worth of construction for the initial phase, and then in the future, construct the second phase with the additional site improvements and the education center. It also stems with requesting from the state grant an extension to the program management plan to a time in the future.
My understanding is that the FINE grant does not cover all aspects of the development, only those that are waterway related. So, the parking, the ramp, that portion that clearly is FINE eligible. Can we split that portion out, do that this year, and then phase the rest of it?
That is, that's a possibility. We were also, part of the FINE application, we were going to seek a funding for the education element of it because FINE does provide assistance for those elements as well. But that could be a future application.
In my experience, FINE grants will be, have been available every year, will be available every year. So, I don't think we jeopardize that component by delaying that.
Carl, I guess I'm a little confused also. We are right now going after grant dollars just for those water access components that FINE will, we're not, we're not planning to construct the whole project this coming year. We've already said we're going to do it in phases, right?
Right. That's why we were going to apply for a multi-year funding. So, this initial upcoming year would be phase one, which is the one and a quarter million dollars. The following year would be the second phase.
Okay, so, one and a quarter million dollars total, or one and a quarter million dollars grant fund?
The grant funding, they fund up to 50 percent. They do have a cap on what they fund. I believe it's a year-by-year basis on what's available.
But the one and a quarter million dollars is for the phase one project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, up to, so the point is, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't, we're not saying we're going to spend $3.9 million this coming year. We're only going to spend one and a quarter million dollars with hopefully half of that coming from FINE. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. They fund up to 50 percent.
Okay. So, you see how the, the, you know, what Carlos gave you was the total cost for a complete project. This year, we're not proposing to construct that total project whatsoever. But because you're, we're always accused of, well, you told us one and a quarter, but it's actually four, Carl's giving you the high figure, but when we really get down to this year's budget, it will be substantially under that. And it's going to be under a million dollars of local dollars required to do phase one. So, Mayor, the answer to your question is yes. We will phase this and the goal is only to do that section that FINE will help fund so that we can get the FINE grant. But anything that FINE doesn't fund, we will try to minimize any of those improvements at this time that would be funded by local tax dollars.
Well, just by way of information, the resolution before us is to apply for a FINE grant. I can tell you from my experience that not every grant application that is submitted is approved, and not every approved grant is ever accepted.
Right.
I have seen numbers of cases where cities and counties have said, thank you for the grant, but because of our own concerns, we're not going to proceed. So, we are not, this resolution does not commit us to spend any money. It authorizes us to submit an application for a grant.
And without taking, adopting this resolution, we forego the grant money?
FINE, the deadline for submission to FINE is April 1st. The grants are reviewed and approval is sometime in June, as I recall. If you don't submit the application, then you, then you are not eligible for grant. If you submit the application and the grant is approved, then you have the option of accepting it or not. But that would give us time to look at this sub-phasing, if you will, to see if we can spread the impact out.
I think that's really the direction of, if I understand, Mr. Landon, that's the direction that we're intending to go. So, I have no problem in terms of recommending that we, we apply, make the application for this grant.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Ness?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes three to one.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the consent agenda, items seven through 11. I have been asked to pull agenda item number eight. Does anyone wish to remove any other If not, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items seven, nine, 10, and 11?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number eight, Mr. Carroll asked me to remove this one. This is the resolution approving amendment to enter local agreement with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Landon, want to tell us what this is all about?
Yes. We have a, have had a contract with the previous sheriff for law enforcement, additional law enforcement services in Palm Coast. That contract expired the last day of January of this year. We are working on a renewal or a new contract with the new sheriff. We have not worked out all the details of that at this point. And so, what we've agreed to with the sheriff, subject to city council approval, is to just extend on a month-to-month basis the current contract. So, there's no time lag in the service and the funding that the city provides the sheriff department. So, this resolution does exactly that. It leaves the current contract in place, no changes. It doesn't obligate you for how the new contract will, the provisions of the new contract and what you work out there. But it does allow us to stay status quo until we do that. So, this is a stopgap until we get the details worked out. As I said during the workshop, I plan to meet with each of you to talk about any of your concerns, issues, things you would like to see in the contract. So, as we sit down with the sheriff, we try to incorporate those, your issues. So, when we bring this back to you, hopefully it will address your concerns and issues you have that you'd like us to do. That was for the future, but this right now is a stopgap once again.
Counselor questions? Mr. McGuire?
The new proposed, or what will be the proposed sheriff's contract that is in writing, is it not, and at our attorney's office as we speak?
Attorney and city manager, and, yeah, we have a draft. It's very similar to what we currently have. And so, yeah, but before we finalize it, we needed to work on some of the details.
And when do you think that would be, Mr. Landon?
I don't have a specific timeframe, but, you know, it's sometime soon. I'd say 30 to 60 days.
So, if we extend the current contract, we're talking two, three months, maybe?
Right. Exactly.
Other counsel questions? Since we removed this from the consent agenda, anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda item number eight?
Jack Cowan, Palm Coast. I guess this is going back to the original question, why do we need the police here? If you didn't give him, what is it, 2.2 million, something like, around there. If you didn't give the sheriff that money, would we be without protection? Would he pull all the deputies out of Palm Coast? And we'd be with nothing? This is the question. We're entitled by our tax money to protection. Now, we're paying twice. This is, this has gone back since we started. Why? Why? My question is, why are we paying twice for police protection? Now, he gets his money and from my taxes to the county, and then he gets my money from the city. So, I just don't understand, and I never understand why we need to pay him 2.1 million dollars or whatever it is. Right? So, just the one question, if we didn't pay him, would he pull all the police out? And since this is a contract with the sheriff, I believe he should be here to explain what he's going to do and why.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Exactly what extras are we getting for the funds that we are giving to the sheriff? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald. I'm here to say to you that this is, you don't hear this very often, but I'm certainly in favor of the money that is being paid on the contract to the sheriff's department. I think they do a good job for us, and we need to keep that in place. With that being said, I think that's really important because with the management style that's been demonstrated by the city, I don't really know where this place is headed for. We read all the time about municipalities that go bankrupt. More importantly, the capital of Pennsylvania, Harrisburg, recently went bankrupt. And it's because of foolish management that goes on years before that you have to keep on paying for, like this long property, that gets you into trouble. So, when Palm Coast is pretty much the way I see it on a parallel course, they're just a little bit behind Harrisburg right now. And so, when Palm Coast goes bankrupt, we're going to need the sheriff's department to take care of us. And the difference is going to be, is that we aren't going to miss anybody in Palm Coast at all from when you do go bankrupt. So, thank you for spending the money.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Ron Radford. Sitting in the audience, I am a little confused concerning this contract that is pending with the sheriff's department. If this contract is in force now, are we paying an additional fee? Or is the rate of cost still the same, though this contract is still being honored? And like other citizens, I'd like to know, what extra does the sheriff's department provide the city of Palm Coast with that we're paying $2 million? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Captain Carmen, I'll ask you to supplement my comments. But when the city of Palm Coast Incorporated in 2000, in 1999, we were receiving the same level of police protection as was available throughout the county. If you look at the city of Benel, it has its own police department, the sheriff supplements it. The city of Flagler Beach has its own police department, the sheriff department supplements it. The vast majority of Flagler County is unincorporated land that has a very low level of police protection because there's a very low demand for service. But the reality is, the sheriff provides service countywide. Shortly after we became a city, the question of a city police department was raised. And the city brought in a consultant from the International Chiefs of Police Association and said, give us a guesstimate of what the startup costs for a police department for the city of Palm Coast would be, what would be the operating cost, and compare those to the contract that we had with the sheriff. Because we did create a contract with the sheriff saying we would like additional services that are dedicated to the city of Palm Coast. Well, the startup cost, according to Chief Hall, I remember that was his name, was something on the order of about $16 million. That's building, cars, initial training, so on and so on and so on and so forth. And at that time, the estimated operating costs would have been about $4 million a year. Now, on the one hand, it gives you complete control over your own destiny. On the other hand, it's almost twice, the operating cost, almost twice what we're paying now. What we did ask for in our contracts with the sheriff in the past was that the sheriff designate someone to be liaison with the city so that we could provide direct input to the sheriff's department and we could get direct feedback from the sheriff's department. Captain Carmen has been that person for, I guess, the whole time. So, the issue is, now, Captain Carmen, can you tell us what it is that we get above and beyond? What are we getting for our 2.54 million dollars?
First of all, good morning, Mayor and council. I just want to answer Mr. Carroll's question and speak on behalf of the sheriff, Mayor free not being here. That was on my, my advice. He'd asked if he needed to be here, and I told him it was on a consent agenda. We didn't think he needed to be here, however, he was planning to be here for the workshop when the contract is done and for the business meeting. So, I just wanted to clear that up first of all. When this started, Palm Wilson, the ICP came in, they did, they sat with me for about a week. What we're paying for in the city of Palm Coast, and I don't normally talk, I just, I am a taxpayer of Palm Coast. I live here, I've lived here for over 25 years. I never get to speak as a taxpayer. We're paying, our county taxes are paying for rural services. The services that you would get on the west side of Flag County. The 2.6 is extra protection, extra above and beyond. So, you would get the city's benefit of a police force versus rural sheriff's office. That money is needed to give you the protection that we have in the extra patrolman, which is 21 extra patrolmen assigned to the city of Palm Coast. You get a lot more than that, but that's in guarantee of what you're getting on top of our county taxes. And, Ms. Landon, am I missing, are pretty much on base with that?
Well, I would just add that, yes, the sheriff did ask if he needed to be here, and I reinforce the fact that, not to extend the existing contract, because he had nothing to do with it, but when the new contract comes forth, that yes, city council would want to meet with him and discuss it with him. want to meet with him and discuss it with him. Secondly, that the, I think Mark was right on target, that this was really intended to add to the level of service here, and the contract amount is really up to city council because it's per deputy. In other words, how many additional deputies would you like to fund to be in Palm Coast specifically? And that is how the current contract is written. I can tell you that the sheriff has made it very clear that he will live with whatever city council approves and make adjustments accordingly. Obviously, at no time will the community not have law enforcement services. That is not an option. However, like any other business, if his budget is cut substantially, he's gonna have to cut resources. And in law enforcement, like a lot of things, cities and counties do, it's very personnel-intensive, and you're not gonna make significant cuts without cutting personnel.
Mr. Landon, if I understood Mr. Carroll's question correctly, and I think I did, if we did not have a contract with the sheriff, what is happening in the city of Palm Coast law enforcement today that would not be happening then?
You'd have fewer deputies on the street.
As I, I forget the specifics of the contract, but 23, 27 deputies, so many supervisors distributed over the three shifts, something on that order of magnitude. Above and beyond, as Mr. Landon puts it, what the rural level of service would be.
Twenty-one, right now, it's 21. A captain commander, a precinct sergeant, the opening of the precinct, which will be being moved up next to City Hall, hopefully by May 1st, is all included, on top of any extras we provide. And just give you the best service we can.
So, Mr. Maguire, I think if we take 2.54 million dollars out of the sheriff's budget, he will take 2.54 million dollars out of his costs. Some of that will be personnel, some of that will be vehicles, some of that will be administrative costs, but...
But I think that's what the question was, Your Honor. I'm not in favor of doing that, but...
Nor am I. And then, there was one final question. In the, in this extension of the contract, is there any change in the remuneration? Is there, are there any additional fees? My understanding is we are continuing exactly under the terms of the contract that has expired.
That is correct.
Continuing the existing contract.
Status quo, month-to-month, is what this is. No changes to the current contract, including costs.
Mr. Lewis.
Mark, in your explanation, the 2 million dollars includes a cost for equipment for the extra deputies and also training. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's all included. The equipment, training, everything that a normal patrol deputy would get. It was just, what we're trying to do is give you the level of a police department services versus the west side of Flagler County, that's more rural, that doesn't need it, based on the population.
And these deputies get the extra training that's given by the state or federal law enforcement?
Every deputy pretty much gets all our mandatory training, any training, depending on their field of expertise, K-9, whatever, they have to go for training for that. My training cost would be more in management, but pretty much it's level across the field. Any deputy assigned to Flagler County is capable of working in the city of Palm Coast on any given day.
Thank you. So we are not assigned deputies by name, we're assigned by number?
Pretty much by number, Mayor, but you pretty much, in the ideal of community policing and knowing the zones and the sectors, pretty much the same deputies that work Palm Coast are familiar with Palm Coast as well as a deputy familiar with the west side of Flagler County or the beachside. We try to put deputies, we try to keep them in the same area as much as possible.
The reality is, I think there are three options open to the city. One would be to renounce the contract, keep the 2.5 million. The sheriff would obviously reduce level of service commensurate to what he's providing countywide. Option two is to negotiate a contract with the sheriff to eventually, to essentially provide specialized police services for the city. The third option, which I have never supported, is to create our own police department. I take, I go to the numbers that we looked at in city council 10 years ago, 11 years ago, and I suspect that they're only worse, not better.
It'd be, I believe, be almost 10 million a year.
There's a fourth option, if I may, Your Honor. The sheriff, Mr. Manfree, has demonstrated a propensity to look for cost reductions. In the new contract, I would like to see either the same level of service for less cost or a commensurate change in...
Level of service.
In level of service. But I, you know, the actions that Mr. Manfree has taken since he's become sheriff indicate to me that he's looking for cost reductions, and I'm hoping he's looking at our contract as well.
You'd like to share in those cost reductions?
You better believe it. Then I might vote for your nature preserve.
If I could reiterate that, you know, the idea is when the new contract comes to you, that this is when we'd have the sheriff here and have a lot of those discussions. This was not intended to be anything but just a stopgap. So that we'll have a full discussion. The sheriff has offered to come talk to city council. Just, this wasn't the time that seemed to be most appropriate because the actual new contract is not on your agenda.
I was the one who withdrew this, but the chairman is not supposed to make a motion. So is there a motion to approve this agenda?
I move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. That's the end of the consent agenda. This brings us to public participation. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Please approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, earlier in your presentation on this navigational portion of the waterways, you spoke of a cost of this agency that runs from Jacksonville down to Miami, I think you mentioned. And my question is, when the Army Corps of Engineers comes in and does dredging, is that an additional cost? Or is that also figured into the general cost that we hear about? Thank you.
I'll get you an answer. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I brought this up at the commission meeting last night. I noticed in the newspapers, Volusia is getting some terrific manufacturing companies hiring 100, 40. It's in the papers, you probably all read it. What is wrong with Flagler County and Palm Coast? If they can bring out, if Flagler, if Volusia can draw these big companies in, what is it that we're lacking that we can't do this? You know, we don't need... Forget about that. What we need is jobs. I know the papers just said that the workforce is getting bigger and more people are hiring, but I don't see it in Palm Coast. I don't see it in Flagler County. Just tell me, what is wrong? Why can't we bring in some high, you know, high-priced places that can hire people for 40 and $50,000 a year? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. The first question had to do with the Florida Inland Navigation District's costs and the cost sharing on dredging. Historically, the state of Florida created the Inland Navigation District as a special taxing district to generate the funds to buy the intercoastal waterway in Florida from a private developer, actually from a series of private developers, one of which was Henry Flagler. That land was then deeded over, dedicated, given to the federal government, and the channel in the ICP, in the intercoastal waterways, technically known as the Federal Channel. The federal government owns it. Unfortunately, the federal government does not pay to maintain it. The Army Corps of Engineers, in the past, had been a partner with FIND. The Florida Inland Navigation District, as a taxing district, would raise the money, sign a contract with the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers would then hire dredging companies and administer the contract. But it has always been the Inland Navigation District that has paid the lion's share of it. Now, they say lion's share because the Army Corps would pick up some administrative costs. But with the changes in funding at the federal level, all shallow draft waterways essentially have been cut from the federal budget. So the Army Corps has no dollars to spend on dredging. FIND continues to generate the revenues to do the dredging. The change in operation is that FIND, instead of contracting with the Army Corps, who would then contract with a dredging company, now FIND, to a greater extent, is contracting directly with dredging companies. But the funding for the maintenance of the intercoastal waterway and the maintenance of the dredge material management areas along the intercoastal waterway have always been the responsibility of the Inland Navigation District. That was by action of the Florida Legislature back in 1927, I think. It was 1930, sometime later, that this additional aspect of public access to public waters was added to the FIND mission. And that's where the issue of the grants comes from. The second issue, the second question, why is Volusia County capable of attracting larger employers, manufacturers, and what are we missing?
Before you answer, can I add another piece?
Sure.
To Jack's question?
Sure.
With the advent of the Economic Development Board or Committee, or whatever you call it at the county, did the city give up its goals of pushing its own economic development program?
Okay. It's a two-part question because historically, as you all know, there was an agency known as Enterprise Flagler that was a public-private partnership between local government and the private sector. And the goal of Enterprise Flagler was economic development, to bring in more jobs, more businesses, to create a more balanced tax base within the county. What happened, cutting to the quick, is that as the private sector put less and less money in, the public sector was funding it to a greater and greater extent and didn't see the kind of results that we'd hoped to get. The city and the county, which were the major funding sources for Enterprise Flagler, declined to fund it any further. Enterprise Flagler was shut down. Flagler County spent several months investigating alternatives, and they have created an economic development organization, hired an executive director, Ms. Van Eckert, to go after, to seek the larger employers, the multiple-job employers. The city of Palm Coast, for a number of years, has had Prosperity 2021. We've had an outlined goal for maintaining the economy of this city. Rather than duplicate the efforts of the Economic Development Board of the county, we have focused more intently on local businesses, smaller businesses, entrepreneurial businesses, helping entrepreneurs open businesses, helping businesses that are having difficulty revise their business plan to ensure their stability, and hopefully asking existing employers to grow. So it's not that we have in any way abandoned, in fact, if anything, we've intensified our efforts. But our focus is on the smaller local businesses, whereas the county, which has considerably more resources, and I think they're funding it $400,000 for economic development, on that order of magnitude. So the question is really better asked of the Economic Development Board of the county, and Ms. Van Eckert, what are we missing? There have been hundreds, there have been a number of answers proposed over the years. Well, we don't have any spec buildings ready for somebody to move in instantaneously. And then we heard from a developer in Jacksonville who said, "Dumbest thing I've ever heard. You got 2 million square feet of Class A space in Jacksonville available at $4 a foot. Nobody's gonna come here when you can get it cheaper there." We've heard comments about transportation deficiencies. We don't have a deep-water port. We don't have heavy rail. We don't have this. I've heard any number of answers. Hopefully, with the hiring of Ms. Van Eckert, whose background is economic development, hopefully, we will get answers and we will move along. If you have a prospect, a company that wants to move, wants to relocate, and if they decide that this part of Florida is the right place, certainly, there's developable land in Palm Coast, there's developable land in Benel, there's developable land in unincorporated county. At that point, their decision becomes one of economics, I suspect. What can they do most effectively, most efficiently, and at lowest cost? I don't know if that answers the question. It asks as many questions. Now, here's, we have somebody who's an economic development guru, Mr. Ferguson.
I appreciate the comment, but I don't think I've earned that relative to my goal to make Palm Coast more of an attractive business investment community. I think you referenced Volusia County and why are they able to attract? I'm trying to figure out whether spending money is the reason why they're more successful. But if you look at some of the investments that they're making in terms of programs, people, incentives, the whole bailiwick, so to speak, of attracting, they have a broader manufacturing base already established there. So they have a perception within investment communities of being open for business, so to speak. Everybody wants to attract new manufacturing and value-added enterprises. I think Palm Coast suffers from its reputation of being a retirement haven. And one of the reasons I'm so committed to this is that I think it's a great place to retire, but it's also a great place to raise a family. And I think the people in Palm Coast are, demographically, are underrepresented, underrepresented for the people who are trying to raise a family and have a job where they can have a wage where they can move on and move up in the American way and buy a bigger house or move from an apartment to buying a home. And frankly, the reason I'm involved in government is to try to bridge the gap of why we can't be more successful in a business environment. And if I'm able to contribute to that, I think I'll make a contribution. But Volusia County's spending tons of money relative to Flagler County. I heard 400,000 that we're spending here. I'll bet you they're spending in the high millions of dollars. I don't know if it's double digits, but it's considerably more. I'm not convinced that spending money is the only way to attract people. I think there's other ways to do it, but...
Your Honor...
Mr. Maguire.
In the '70s, '80s, and early '90s, I was tasked with finding a place in the South to move a plant or build a plant, especially in states where unions were not particularly active. Florida, in this particular part of Florida, is not a good place to have a big industrial factory. Why? For one, the ground's too soft. You know, you can't put a stamping plant for General Motors here because the first time you start running those punch presses, they'll sink into the ground. I'm not exaggerating. There are companies down in Armond Beach that face this on a regular basis. We don't have a seaport. We don't have a rail. I mean, there's a rail that runs through Benel, but it doesn't stop. I guess you could maybe ask them to stop, maybe. But if, during the boom of the '70s and '80s, when manufacturing was looking to branch out and expand or move from a bad labor relations situation to a better one, this was never considered a good place to be. If they didn't like it in the '70s, why should they like it today? It isn't, the ground's still the same, the atmosphere is still the same. We took the position in the city of Palm Coast, not officially, but we're there, that the county... the county administration would go after enticing business into the county, and we in the city of Palm Coast would look toward what can we help the small businesses that are already here to be perpetual and grow their business and add to the payroll. And to that end, the Business Assistance Center was founded. In my view, it's wildly successful. And I know a lot of people that live in my district, especially out in Hargrove Grave, will sing the praises of the BAC regular. But I don't think that in our lifetime, we're going to see any heavy industrial operations move to Flagler County or to Palm Coast. There's too many negatives and not enough positives. And there's too much competition from places like Jacksonville that are competing for that business. So, that's my two cents worth.
Can I ask Mr. McGuire?
Please.
Have you discussed this with the county?
Oh, yeah.
Because at one time, Palm Coast was the big elephant in the room. Now, we're the pool. So, in terms of economic development, they need to be concerned about what we were concerned about, and I think we were doing a pretty good job of it. But we don't have to go into manufacturing. There are many. I've advocated for a long time that we should go into a smart business program where we look at research, we look at Silicon Valley-type stuff, you know?
And I have had that conversation with Hilga Van Eckert. She's in complete agreement with you, that this would be a good place to have a second Silicon Valley. But so far, we haven't had any nibbles that I'm aware of.
And just to put a happier spin on this, it was about three weeks ago that we went to the ribbon-cutting for Coastal Cloud. This is a company, provides the kind of high-tech service you're talking about. They started in our local privately-owned business incubator, Office Divvy. They got a start right here in Palm Coast. They grew their business. They grew their customer base. Now, they're expanding their platform, and they are anticipating hiring, Bill, what were they saying, 50 people? So, the idea of growing local business does work all the time. Depends on the product, depends on your business model, depends on your expertise. But it can work, and here's a classic example that it did work.
Absolutely.
Mayor, if I could continue with that positive note, because it was actually going to be part of my comments. You know, the image, the perception is sometimes hard to break. And Mr. Carroll says, well, we aren't creating any jobs here. And the fact of it is, is just the opposite. We have actually, in the past year, created more jobs in Palm Coast than anyplace else percentage-wise in the state of Florida. Let me give you some actual numbers that we're seeing. And as was pointed out, one of our local newspapers reported the good news this morning. But, you know, during our heyday, you know, let's say back in 2007, we had about 20,000 people employed in the Palm Coast metropolitan area. 29,000, excuse me, 29,000. That dropped in 2009 to 28,000. So, we dropped about 1,000 people just here in Palm Coast. We have been climbing since the low point in April 2009 to the last number I had is December. The new numbers for January came out yesterday, but I have a number of 29,660 in December. So, that is an increase of approximately 1,600 in a three-year period. If we were, that's 500 to 600 new jobs net increase in the last three years. If we were to bring in a business each year that created 500 jobs, we'd all be heroes. But instead, what we've been doing, and I think quite successfully, is trying to create one job at a time. But as I've described many times, it's like watching kids grow up. If they live in the home with you and they keep growing, you don't see much of it. But if you're the grandparent that sees them only once a year, every time you see them, wow. So, if we take a look at it, we have been growing jobs here in the Palm Coast metropolitan area about 500 to 600 a year since our low point. We have approximately 600 more jobs in Palm Coast today than we did during the boom period. And I think largely, what we've had to do, and it's just like the council members indicated, is we've had to diversify. Instead of just going after the big fish, we've been trying to continue to seek out the large companies with the county's effort, but also then promote our local businesses, as all the council members have said. And those numbers indicate we've been very successful. The new numbers that just came out, and I'm looking at something from our economic development planner that supports what you read in the newspaper today, is in 2012, once again, we had the greatest decrease, if that makes sense, the largest decrease in unemployment in the state of Florida, right here in Palm Coast. What the numbers came out is we had the highest employment growth in three areas. Professional and business services went up 15% in 2012. Financial activities went up 14%. These are employment numbers. And in mining, lodging, and construction, we went up over 12%. Those three were the highest increases in those categories in the state of Florida. So, we actually are seeing significant progress here. And what that is, I think, also significant is that we've been such a bedroom community where so many people had to get in their car every morning and hit the highway to find a job. And a lot of the people who are on our unemployment rolls didn't lose their job in Palm Coast. Mayor, you point that out.
I think if you use the statistics from the Center for Business Excellence, 40% of the people who are unemployed in Palm Coast never held a job in Flagler County. Economy is regional.
Yes.
When Volusia adds jobs, some of our Flagler County residents will fill those jobs.
Yes. So, when you look at the regional numbers, which includes our new metropolitan statistical area, which is Palm Coast, Daytona Beach, Port Orange, our unemployment is very consistent with the state of about 8%, 8.5%. And the fact of it is, is that we are very much a regional because of our history. And you have to take in consideration your community. And we didn't start off as a job center. It wasn't designed. Palm Coast wasn't designed as a job center. It was, started off as a retirement area. We've had to try to slowly build that, as Mr. Ferguson has indicated, in the fact that we now are more than a retirement community. But we have to also be realistic about the assets we have and the opportunities and play off of those. And I think the new economic effort of the county and the city diversifying, instead of us all putting our eggs in the Enterprise Flagler and working together with just one unit, we're now focusing on multiple units, working with each other. When we need the county's help, they come running. We've seen that. We've had some recent visits of potential clients come in, and we always help them if that happens. But we're much more diversified, and the numbers indicate we're being very successful. We just need to get that positive word out there.
What's the average salary?
You know, the question was, what's the average salary? And I get that question, what kind of jobs? And I've learned to respond, it's the type of jobs that the private sector will bring to us. You know, it's like, well, how come we've got Zaxby's and not Chick-fil-A? Because Zaxby's said they wanted to come to Palm Coast. And so, when people, businesses say they want to grow their business here, they want to move their business here, I don't ask what kind of salary. I say, okay, if you're going to create jobs, our door is open. And the private sector is the one that's going to control what those jobs are. And sure, we'd love all the jobs to be high-paying, but I think it's all a matter of having to go with the market, having to go with the private sector, and that's what we're doing. Instead of trying to force something, we're recognizing the fact that the private sector is one that really needs to be creating the jobs, and we need to work with them. So, whatever jobs they're going to bring, we're going to work with them to do that.
Okay. I think we've exhausted that topic. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Mr. Ferguson, we'll start with you. Mr. Lewis?
Right.
Mr. McGuire?
There's two things on the radar, and I'm sure all of us are all aware of it. The state legislature is considering the validity of internet cafes. If the state legislature decides that they're to be done away with, this will definitely impound us because we have, I think, half a dozen of them here in the city. And whether you like them or not from a moralistic standpoint, they do generate some tax revenue for the city. So, we should be aware of that. The other thing is that the state legislature is taking a look at the value of red light cameras, and there are numerous proposals put forward, whether or not, well, we'll just do away with the ones on right turns and look at something else. So, you know, we talked a lot about law enforcement today and what Sheriff Manfree could do for the city. But again, the red light cameras continue to be a very hot topic with our citizens. Nobody is neutral on it. They either love them or they hate them. So, I just want to make sure that this goes in the record, that we're all, we all have an eye on what the state legislature is doing relative to internet cafes and red light cameras, because it will have a profound effect on our city. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. I find it interesting that for more than three years, speaking on behalf of Palm Coast, I've asked our legislature to take a position on internet cafes. And I've said, there's two clear options. If they are illegal, shut them down. If they are legal, regulate them and tax them appropriately. The state gets 35% off of legalized gambling elsewhere. Why not get 35% off that and help close their budget gap?
Absolutely.
It takes a scandal, an embarrassment, to generate some action, apparently. So, we shall see where they go.
But in point of fact, unless Captain Carmen shows statistics to the otherwise, our internet cafes have been pretty good citizens.
We have not seen, Captain, we've not seen one, I think we have a couple of issues, but nothing of any great magnitude.
I think there may have been some incidents that happened in the proximity of them, but were they directly related to the fact that there's an internet cafe there?
Mayor, the last report you asked me to do, we, other than an alarm going off at one of the cafes or some that spilled over from a bar that happened to be next door, we haven't had any significance at the cafes. I do want to point out, we were locally not advised of the allied veterans by the federal agents that they were coming to do that, or you would have been notified beforehand. So, that's about it.
Mr. Mayor, just to add on to that, that is correct. It's been my understanding that there were no local governments that were advised whatsoever about the multi-year investigation that was ongoing by the federal task force working with the local law enforcement, not our local law enforcement state. Councilmember McGuire is absolutely correct. There's six internet cafes that are still currently operating in the city of Palm Coast. This council, several years ago, chose to take the path of regulating internet cafes as opposed to trying what several other local governments had tried to do, which was outlaw them and bear the burden at the expense of fighting the internet cafes in court. I would suggest that, and I'll defer to Captain Carmen, but part of the benefit of those regulations may have had a factor in how our citizens have not had to deal with the external burdens of those internet cafes. The issue that the state government's taking up is really a different issue. And that is, is it gambling? And if it's gambling, then that's a state issue. Because that's not something that this city has ever, or really, any other city other than Seminole County, has chosen to take on. And some local law enforcement agencies have tried to take the position that what goes on inside those internet cafes is illegal gambling. This city, along with most other cities, chose to regulate them, to try to minimize the external impacts of these business establishments.
And Your Honor, tagging on to Mr. Reichman, that's a very hypocritical point, in my opinion, for the state to take because there's a couple of points to be made. First of all, the citizens that live here want it. They enjoy it. They get on buses to go to the other side of the state and spend gambling money in gambling casinos. I don't spend any of my money on it because I'm basically a cheap person, but people that want it spend their money there, and they've been good citizens. The other thing is, is that, and I made this statement when we first put our regulations together, and I'll make it again. You can drive down some of the private facilities in this city, and I can think of a bunch of them right now, and go in there, they've got poker machines, they've got bingo, they roll the dice for money. And that's not gambling. That's okay. But an internet casino is gambling? I mean, give me a break.
I think you're absolutely right. The internet cafes have existed because of an ambiguity in the state statute. I think it is, was, and is incumbent on the state legislature to clear up that ambiguity and answer the question. And I am absolutely right. If you're going to permit them, then we need strict regulations. Not only regulations in terms of the nature of the game, is it a game of chance? Is it a game of skill? But the kind of regulations that the city put in, we want to be able to see in the windows, we want to be sure that there's security guards there, we want to regulate the hours. Put all the regulations in place that protect the residents, and then, as they do with other legalized gambling, take the appropriate revenues.
Because if the citizens didn't want them, they'd already gone out of business.
Discussion by city attorney of matters on the agenda.
I just had my, said my piece.
Mr. Landon, discussion by city manager.
I'm on a positive kick. I had more positive emails this weekend, I think, in a long time. And some of them were, I think, a sign of the times are changing. One of our neighborhood watch groups, a leader, emailed me and said the foreclosed homes have been sold, and the new owners are taking care of the outside. It's great. They're seeing a new home under construction, and nothing but positive reports. Where a couple of years ago, we just constantly heard about the neighborhood going the wrong direction. I thought that was great to see. Some of the other things, when it comes to construction, we're seeing right now is, for this fiscal year, we could see double the amount of single-family homes start in 2013 that we saw in '12. Those numbers continue to look very, very strong and very positive. And I think that's, not just helps with the construction jobs, but I think it helps stabilize the neighborhoods and the home values, et cetera. So, a lot of positive news on those fronts in addition to our employment numbers we've already talked about. We actually partner with the Home Builders Association for the Parade of Homes, Flagler Parade of Homes. That is going on right now. You'll see the little yellow signs that point you in those directions from March 16 through the 24. So, it started this past weekend and go through this weekend. Once again, trying to get people out to think about investing in Palm Coast and throughout Flagler County. Our sports venues continue to blossom. We have the, and I'm not going to know what it stands for. It's not NCAA, but it's NCAA Youth Sports Clinic. They are some, it's a group that comes in every year that brings in their coaches. It's a sports association. I think this is the third year, and they put on a clinic for our young kids for our recreation program. That happened this past weekend. Very, very positive that Luann just can't say enough good things about. And those are people that are coming in from out of state for their conference here, and very positive. The state cup had a regional tournament here in Palm Coast this past weekend. Weather couldn't have been better. All the positive accolades we always get. And then here, next week or two weeks from now, we're going to have a boys' actual state cup, the state championship here in Palm Coast. Those are things we never had a while back. So, last few years, it's really taken off. And then lastly, speaking of festivals today, the Food Truck Tuesdays, second opportunity to participate in that is tonight. The first one was highly successful. I stopped by, I don't wait in line that long, you know, the line was so many people. So, and everybody was bragging about how great it was. And so our second one is tonight, Central Park, starts at 5:00, which was good, a lot of fun and a lot of good food. So some of the positive things going on, a lot of, a lot of good things.
Thank you. One positive, Mr. Landon didn't mention, he received, and I guess we all received, an email from a couple, a resident in Palm Coast, just lauding all the things good about Palm Coast and how they will go out and recommend Palm Coast to everyone. I would love to have that email published, if we could.
They got to publish both sides of the issue.
Now, this was a very, from a resident, I thought, very, it's a long email, but maybe they can go and publish it.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn.
Re-adjourn. Thank you for your participation.